My name is Carl Webb. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission for the city of Clearlake. Tonight, at our commission meeting, we had three items on the agenda. The first one, starting with somebody that wants to replace an older mobile home with a new one, and it doesn't quite fit on the lot, and he's requesting a variance so that he can have a four-foot variance in the setback, which was granted by the Planning Commission after consideration. The next item that we got into tonight was the possibility of installing a graffiti wall at one of the parks in the city. And after some discussion on that, it was decided we wanted more information, and it will be brought back before the commission in one or two meetings from now with additional information. And the third item that we had tonight, and this was a very short meeting tonight, but the third item was just a report on how we're doing on redevelopment properties that were put in abeyance by the state when they stopped the redevelopment program, and how they're now coming back into use for the city, and, you know, hopefully we'll have some real changes in the city here very shortly because of this being available.
Yeah, that would be something to...
Call this meeting a regular meeting of the Clearlake Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Committee to order on Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Slocum is absent. Commissioner Antis?
Present.
Commissioner Perkins?
Present.
Vice Chair Hutchinson?
Present.
Chair Webb, present.
Can you join me in the virtual audience? Everybody in the audience, if you remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm not going to go into all the detail on this since we don't have anybody in the audience. Any public comment?
No, we have not.
Sorry to do that, not here. Okay. We're going to go right into a public hearing. An open hearing, we've got presentations by staff, presentation by the applicant about applicable except public testimony, applicant will have a period of protection. Close the public hearing, Commissioner comments and questions, Commissioner action. Once the hearing is closed, no further comment will be taken. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing to consider the approval of an application for a variance, V02-15. Do we have staff report?
Yes, we do. As you received your packet last Friday, I'll just summarize the staff report for this project. The applicant has submitted a request for variance to allow reduction of the required 20-foot front yard setback to 16 feet. The property consists of a 50 by 100-foot parcel with standard setbacks of 20-foot front yard, 10-foot street side yard, 10-foot rear yard, and 5-foot side yard setbacks. A single-wide mobile home was removed from the property in 2003, and the parcel has remained vacant for the last 12 years. The city municipal code requires a two-car garage to be constructed if the living unit has not been replaced within one year from the date of the final inspection. In order to accommodate a 24-by-56 three-bedroom, two-bath manufactured home and a 400-square garage on the corner parcel, a variance is being requested. The building inspector, Lee Lambert, and I walked the property on May 14th, and did not see any issues due to sight distance obstructions. The property line is located approximately four feet from the street right-of-way on both 39th Avenue and Irving. The scope and scale of the proposed project is consistent with other properties in the surrounding area. Therefore, does not amount to a grant as special privilege. The property consists of a 50 by 100-foot corner parcel, the size making it difficult to install a 1,344 square foot manufactured home with a two-car garage and need all setbacks. No significant negative impacts have been identified in association with this proposal. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve variance, V02-15, with the following conditions based upon the facts and conclusions contained in the staff report with the following conditions. The applicant submitted a request for address change from 39th Avenue to Irving Avenue, and to submit a building plans for approval by the Building and Planning Department and obtain building permit for this project. I would like to note that Commissioner Slocum is unable to attend tonight's meeting, however, he did comment that land survey of the property, no indication of the structure, should be required.
Oh, we have somebody in the audience now.
Didn't mean to pack the whole house.
Is anybody in the audience who's to speak to this issue? Commissioner Perkins, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I took a site visit. This was a lot easier to find than the previous site, and I noticed that there was a power pole in the middle of the property. I was wondering what's going to happen with that once it's developed.
He's going to have to install a new power pole. That one's going to be removed and relocated on the property. We'll do that through the building plans and planning portion of the project. If it's appropriate.
Who else? Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, cut down the driveway down to 16 feet. Where are we taking that rest of that, making that up? Being, if you have a street, do you want, do you have a standard 20-foot or whatever foot road, and sidewalks and gutters?
He's not going to be cutting down the concrete cement driveway portion of it. It's where the house is going to be located on the property. The garage itself is going to be 20 feet back from the property line.
So the car and the driveway will not be?
Within 16 feet of it. No, it'll be its full 20-foot setback, yeah. It'll be, it's being pushed back further. The home itself has to accommodate the 50-foot wide parcel and put on a 24, I think it's 24 by, or 24-foot eight-inch modular on there. He had to reduce that or ask for a reduction of the front setbacks by four feet. The garage is okay, it's going to still be 20 feet.
What's the front?
The front setback.
Yeah.
Normally it would be 20 feet. He's asking for a reduction of four feet, so it's going to be 16 feet.
So the house is going to be?
Yeah, yeah. And that includes the whole structure, that there's no steps or anything else that are going to be encroaching into that 16-foot setback.
In regards to the setback, there on the corner of 39th and Irving, is the setback going to be on 39th or on Irving?
It's going to be on Irving.
It's going to be on Irving.
Yeah, he's going to change his address from 39th Avenue to Irving, yeah.
My concern with this is, we've got numerous examples in the city when it's now, we've allowed somebody to build inside that area right on the corner, and then as time goes on, there's shrubs there, and there's fences there, and there's no visibility for cars in the future. I think we should make that a situation if we can on the building, then over three-foot high, or planning then over three-foot high, within the, again, variance.
Okay. Absolutely.
Yeah, in, the property itself, if you notice, did you get a chance to go out there, Michelle? Okay. The property actually is setback from the right-of-way at four feet, so there's an additional four feet right there for his property might even start on both 39th Avenue and Irving Avenue. So that will help too in the future when they do decide to put curb gutter, if they ever do decide to put curb cutting and sidewalk there.
The height is such an issue in so many areas where we don't have curb and gutter.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I have in my notes, four foot, but three foot on the corner.
If you're in a little car, you can't see through.
If we're in my car.
And in our municipal code, under fences, that only allows for three foot. It's determined by the city engineer how high the fence is on a corner lot, that they like to stick with three feet.
Any other questions? Any comments? Motion?
I would like to motion for approval of the variance with stipulation.
So you're talking about a warning to adopt resolution number PC 2015-03, resolution finding commission of city of Clearlake approving the variance and most of the things issued, read it by title on.
Yes, exactly what I said, right there, and now I'm on that page. With the three foot, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second. Now, is that with or without the three-foot height requirement?
With the three foot.
One second. Okay. Did we hear a roll call on this? Yes, we did. Public hearing, staff do the roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Antis?
Aye.
Commissioner Perkins?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hutchinson?
Aye.
Chair Webb?
Aye. Okay. Next item will be a presentation and discussion on the possibility of establishing a graffiti wall on Austin Park. Staff is recommending, if we hear the presentation discussion, we determine whether to recommend it or not.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This item came to the council, it was a request to have this item considered, referred to you sitting as the Parks and Recreation Committee, to make a recommendation back to the council. You may have noticed that there has been a significant amount of graffiti recently popping up around the city, and we have a young man who actually contacted our council member, Spocky, who's working over here setting up. Young man was not able to be here this evening, but he did send this little presentation that we'll show you. His thought is to allow for a graffiti wall, an art graffiti wall, to assist in perhaps reducing the types of graffiti that we're seeing around town. And there are other communities, really throughout the nation, that have done something similar and are seeing some success with that. So this evening, as soon as we're ready to go here, you'll see the short presentation, which is about two or three minutes, and then the discussion would be whether or not you think it would be something that the council should consider allowing, make a recommendation off them. I did have some conversation with the police chief, who is at training this week, was not able to be here, and we weren't able to have a staff person from there. They're very interested in having some potential input into, if your recommendation is to move forward with it, on how it would work, so it doesn't create an additional problem down the road. But I think when you see the presentation, that will give you some, certainly some food for thought and discussion on making a recommendation on the council.
We're looking walking across the lines.
I have a feeling this is...
Illegal freestyle wall for artists can reduce vandalism by a ton. In Denver, Colorado, they use these legal graffiti walls to reduce the gang graffiti problem by just letting artists do murals in the area. According to residents, it has really helped out in solving their issue. This is an example of Denver, where they've allowed a freestyle wall to help get rid of the gang graffiti. Another example. This is a picture of Gardenland Park in Sacramento, California. This piece of art has been here for years, and nobody's ever disrespected it. This area is also well-known for its gang activity, and for not to be touched at all. It's very fascinating and shows that people have respect for the art. Having a freestyle wall for all types of artists has not only reduced the vandalism, but it can bring people together and make our parks more attractive for people to visit. Reason being, because it shows our park has culture, and it is open to a variety of different people. It is a positive thing for the people in the community to be able to express themselves freely, even if we feel it is negative. It can always be removed or gone over by another artist, but that is the purpose of the wall. It is constantly evolving. The wall is an infinite source of expression, and it will show that the area is active.
And that last one that said, oh, I'm sure if you remember, we know.
Yeah, I got it.
That's him and his sister that made that happen.
Cool.
And he would like to start off the wall by setting a standard of what should be on the wall, something that's positive, something that's hard to see, something that they made on the video, three things that he says should not be on there, profanity, gang signs, and the rest should be forced to be.
So with that, I think it would be appropriate for you to have some discussion there, open, make a determination.
Mr. Questions?
In Santa Rosa, on the underpass going to the downtown mall, initially when they built that, there was nothing on the walls, and it was constantly being tagged, they did a mural, it's not being tagged anymore. I'm familiar with Sacramento, because I've lived up there for many years, and once you get a quote graffiti wall that has its logistics all spelled out for you, they don't re-tag it. And then in either Marin or San Rafael, there was a big beige building that faced the freeway, and every, without, it was, I always called it a dot, because the guy that did it did this big president thing with dots and walked back and forth and back and forth, and once he did that, it just never got tagged again. So I'm all for, you know, if this will bring the community together and give the kids a venue, rather than facing IGA or Fort Town. I'm all for it.
Who else?
So, how does this work to keep them from painting other areas that they aren't painting now? I mean, you have a location, if it's evolving and changing, that's restricting into one area, but as soon as you, if that's a permanent thing, like a lot of these you were talking about, now where do they go?
Okay, good question. I hope that Mr. Perez would be able to be here this evening and be able to expand a little bit in terms of the questions that may come up. I think, as Commissioner Hutchinson just said, when you set forth the parameters, there tends to be, from what I understand, that's happened in other communities, a respect for that, and that they do tend to then gravitate to the wall. I think in our community, if you make a recommendation to the council to allow for it, and the council supports that, that certainly the parameters would have to be well, made well-known, advertised, and then we'd have to monitor it, and if there was an abuse of it, consider if it stays up, or some modification to get people focused on that, on that particular wall.
Who in your staff has time to monitor it?
That's a very good question. It would have to fall to our, right now, our one first person to do the, pretty much the daily monitoring. We do during the summer months where, I would think it might have more activity of a wall of its nature during the nicer months of year. We do have several temporary employees that we could put into that, into that role, but it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, every day. We also have the Adopt a Park program, that you'll remember you recommended recently to the council, and it could become a project under the Adopt a Park program, if there was somebody that wished to take that on as a project, and then they would be responsible for it, as well as staff, monitoring it.
I have some real concerns about Austin Park being a venue for it, because that's a family park, I don't think you need profanity and gang signs on a wall, and Austin Park is a family park. Down at the clinic, there was a bear wall down there, which years ago we approved, a mural campaign there, I think you were in the commission at that time, and the mural was done very well, people have loved it a lot. But they made up for it in other areas of town. And a lot of profanity, a lot of gang signs that we're seeing around. I have a lot of them saying, okay, you can have carte blanche wall, you can do what you want, and basically you're going to have carte blanche, but you have somebody monitoring it constantly.
My question is, how do you, you know, once you have them running around with spray paint and things, how do you direct it to the murals or the spots where you want them to have it, not just tagging everything along the way? Be interesting to see how you, how other areas are...
I was just going to say, perhaps it would be a benefit to contact, the staff that contacts some others that have them, and find out how they have promoted them, what the rules are, how they are enforcing those rules, whether or not there is support from within the graffiti artist community to help monitor. I think if Mr. Perez was here tonight, he might be able to address at least that aspect of it, and bring us back to the management with specific examples of how they are working in other communities.
Okay. Just done some traveling in Europe, and I'll tell you, there were a few probably there is a lot worse than ours, and they have murals that have graffiti all up to, I'd say it's a terrible situation, and in some areas where they're very historic buildings that appear to be based in life. I'm not saying that would happen here, but it's an idea of what can happen without some severe monitoring, and I just don't think we have the staff to be able to do that unless the city manager over here, he'd come up with some magical dollars. Because I think it's just, it really is going to be a very serious problem. It's a problem now, but it's going to be a lot worse with the, we try to do this in the forest.
Is there a problem with, what is his name, Mr. Perez? With him being at, like, when we bring this back? Is it just he was unavailable this evening? That's my understanding.
Okay, so the next time when we bring this back, you know, with recommendations from staff to find out, that we can talk to him about, because he shows some nice pictures, you know, I'm familiar with this couple of areas.
And I should indicate also that our Commissioner Dirk Slocum, who was not able to be here this evening, also sent several photos of other walls, also in Sacramento, that were fairly nice, and we can print those and have those available unless we figure out how to do them on the wall.
I can think of two other tag walls, the one down there at Fort Town and the side of IGA, you know, those get tagged. Would it be possible to have businesses sign up to have graffiti artists paint the sides of their building to inhibit or prohibit future tagging? Because I'm sure that, you know, any one of the businesses that are being tagged have to constantly repaint, you know, and they can get a few of the graffiti artists together and, you know, muralize Fort Town or IGA or whatever it is. If that's possible?
Certainly it's possible, whether or not it's going to work, this is the question. We've been very, very well with the mural, the only mural that we have in town, that's been left alone.
Yeah, yeah.
And the church. Church.
One of those.
But how do you, you know, how do you control it? And that's... And what's, what's going to be considered offensive to point that it should be removed or beat it over or something? Who's going to make those decisions? I think there's going to be a lot more. There's going to be a lot more.
And that very well may be something that other jurisdictions have come up with some way to do that, so we'll get some additional information and bring it back.
Okay. Do we have anything else on that, questions? In that case, then we're going to have a report on former redevelopment agencies we have cooperation.
Yes, this is kind of a multifaceted report. I just, I wanted to fill you in, I think I mentioned to you before that we were in the process of doing appraisals on certain of the former redevelopment agency properties, the property across the street, the old Austin Park piece, the airport property, and the 28-acre piece that is out off of Old Highway 53, which at one time, I believe, was being looked at for housing development. And so those appraisals, I'm expecting any time, once we have those, and certainly we're in a position to look at the potential of marketing them. The exception may be, the property right across the street, the long-range property management plan, did indicate that we did not have to sell it right away, that we could wait until the time as the market was better, the real estate market was better, or that we had a viable potential development for that property. If somebody was to walk in, certainly, and want to do a nice anchor development there, we wouldn't, we wouldn't say no to them. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. So what does that mean in terms of, particularly the airport property? I've indicated to you before that through the dissolution process, we have maintained contact with the developer that wanted to do a project on that property previously. That person is, or that development company is still out there. You will recall that the project stopped with the filing of the lawsuit from Sierra Club, and the settlement was that when the project was ready to go forward, they agreed to do a full-fledged EIR. So we are to a point now that we're doing the appraisal on that property of seriously talking with that developer, and on the next council agenda will be consideration of the agreement that is now expired, that was in place with that developer before, to exclusively negotiate for a period of time with the city for a project there. So things are beginning to gel and move forward. Now, whether or not the agreement that goes forward is ultimately approved, we'll see on the 28th, but I did want you to know that. Normally, I would bring that, the proposed agreement back through you, but it's, I had the city attorney look at it, there are no recommended changes legally to that document, so it's essentially the same as it was before, as the recommendation, obviously with some date changes. Also on the agenda for the 28th, we have the long, the long-range property management plan, the Letcher Drive Downtown corridor plan. We've talked before about the number of plans that have been done in the city and put on the shelf, and nothing's happened with them. And my commitment at the get-go on moving forward with that plan, which the financing was already in place to do when I came on board, but the commitment was that that plan would not sit on the shelf, that we would move forward to implement it. So we will be making some recommendations to the council on the 28th to allocate some of the bond monies, the Series A bond monies that were issued by the former redevelopment agency, to do additional implementation of that plan along the corridor. We are in the process of applying for a grant for the intersection improvement, curb gutter sidewalk primarily, out here at Letcher and Olympic. We feel fairly confident that we'll be able to get that grant, so we're not proposing any bond monies to that project, with the exception of up to $200,000 as matching money for that grant. And that was approved by the council at their last council meeting. The other projects would be also curb gutter sidewalk projects recommended in that plan at various locations down the, down the, down the drive, Letcher Drive, as well as the... as well as the potential acquisition of properties. We're approaching this as a redevelopment type project. We don't have redevelopment anymore, but that doesn't mean that we can't approach it using those bond monies for the intention that they were sold for. So that will be on the agenda for the 28th. We're also recommending doing full-fledged master plans for Austin Park and Redbud Park. We had the grant to do Highlands Park, which we'll be moving forward with rather quickly. But to do full-fledged plans for each of the others to address potential relocation of parking spaces, for instance, in Austin Park. You'll remember that that, Austin Park does have covenants on it though. It has to be used for athletic purposes, athletic field purposes. So what I, my vision would be that in developing a master plan, instead of having most all the parking at the front here, which really doesn't create a nice visual looking into the park, is to create pockets in conjunction with designated athletic fields and potentially look at moving the children's playground across the street. Might be a bit safer than having it where it is, those kinds of things. All of that falls right into the redevelopment aspect. And some of the properties that we would be, that we will be recommending for purchase would create a municipal parking area down toward the other end of Lake Shore Drive. Expansion potentially of one of the parks. And I'm not in a position tonight, because I don't have information back from all the property owners yet to identify specifically which properties, but I'll know that by Thursday. I've got to get this done before then. So I just wanted to give you an update, that things are moving forward, that we are going to implement that Lake Shore Corridor Plan. A few things have been done already, the lights in conjunction with Pugenee, which didn't cost us any money. So I just think it's important for you to be in that loop. Some of those things will definitely be coming back to us in plan commission as we move forward. But that's kind of the beginning. We'll hold back some of those bond monies for the potential of the Highway 53 corridor, particularly the connector street between Highway 53 and Old 53. It's in the Caltrans long range plan that they have. Don't want to identify a specific amount at this point as negotiations occur with the developer on the airport property. So we're not moving forward with recommendations at this point on the Series B bonds, which were housing-related. Some of those funds have been allocated by the council already for zoning ordinance, things that are tied to housing, to enable to get those projects done. So some of that money is being expended, but there will be others that will be coming forward for recommendation in the future as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
As the Lake Shore Drive Development Plan was planned, it had a considerable change in parking on Lake Shore Drive as to how the parking would be handled. And if we start putting in curb gutter and sidewalk on Lake Shore Drive, now what's that going to do to the ultimate parking plan?
Well, and that's a very good question. As those plans are developed by Public Works and the engineering firm that we use closely on to engineering, all of that will be identified in those plans and how it's going to fit into certain areas. And then ultimately to hopefully identify additional municipal parking areas that as development continues to occur along the corridor, that we have pockets of parking in addition to what will remain on the street itself.
Couple of things. The Walmart and their desire to expand, anything going on for that?
No, there's not. And I want to be careful not to get too far afield of the agenda item because it's not, that's not a redevelopment project. But no, they, for, gosh, it's been probably six months at least that we have heard anything from them. I actually did email this week to find out, do we know anything addition? So at the next, at your next meeting, I can report.
The other ones were Safeway, and the Wald Park, and all these, which are definitely still in the corner of the fish.
Those are all good questions. I'll put them in your one report for the next meeting.
That was okay to answer now because we're on the city manager reports. Anything else? No?
When the curb gutter and sidewalks is planned for Lake Shore Drive with the new companies that, new businesses that opened that signed the contract with the city, is that still, you know, do we still have tabs on these signs that they would?
Yes, and we've had that discussion internally, how we will be addressing that. And don't have a final answer on that yet, but yes, we're very cognizant of the potential of, not the potential, but how we integrate that into the city projects as well.
It's nice to hear that you're still in talks with the developer though with that corner. And when that sign went down that had the Walgreens and Starbucks, that they still had the real estate, but now there's hope that.
That was still. I'll give you a report on it, okay?
Anything else?
The only thing I have to report is on Friday, I drink 58. That's been my whole way up through this week.
Okay, anything else you need to report?
No, that's my report.
I guess we're doing a commission report.
636.
636.